We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Tuesday, January 19th to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
If you will, please let us stand together for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we pray your protection for this assembled body. May the brightness of your countenance shine upon them, keep them in your hand, and give them the assurance of your walk with them as they go about the business of deliberating the affairs of our beloved county. May they find in you the strength to withstand those who criticize, give them the humility to accept aid when offered, and the courage to do the right thing. Holy Father, make them aware of your presence as they take part in that divinely appointed experiment we call human government. Then at the end of the day, let them know, all that is required of you is to love mercy, do justly, and to walk humbly with their God. In his holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioners, in the agenda, there is one item that we need to add under the consent agenda. We would make it one D. There's a budget amendment for $3,600 at the Sheriff's Department for telephone. You should have that on your desk before you. And are there any other additions to the agenda? Here, none. Do I have a motion that we?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. The consent agenda, you have the tax releases, refunds, the energy neighbor, CP and L budget amendment, Sheriff K-9 donation budget amendment, and then the addition that we just discussed. Are there any items to pull? Here, none. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Number two on our agenda, the Craven County Aging Planning Board budget revisions for 2020, 2021. Mr. Clayton Gaston, good morning, sir.
Good morning, folks. How are you all doing?
Doing well.
So we have before us a budget amendment. It should be the last page in the packet that you guys have. We've had a surplus of money. There's been a few services that have been on hold for the first six months of the year, carts, and with not being as many of the congregate meals going on. And also, the senior companion program is still on hold. So we met, we had our regular meeting in November. We met again in December for a special call meeting to discuss the funds, to make sure we didn't lose any of those by the end of this fiscal year. So we've reallocated some of the funds. Do you all have this in your packet? It's titled, it's top Craven Aging Planning Board Budget Committee Proposal. It might be the very last page.
Yeah, you got it, you got it.
So if you look at the bottom in the middle, the original budget was 5,888. Couple of lines over under the proposed revision, it's 5,19108. And there's right beside that, you'll see 4220. That was a county match that was put in back in May, and it was never allocated to one of the providers because of the circumstances. It's been on hold. But up at the top, to the extreme right, we have reallocated 5,000 to Havelock Senior Services at their request. And then you'll see in parentheses are the credits that were made back from those providers. And then two down from that, under case management, we have added 57,755 to that. So what we're asking is that this budget amendment be passed at this time. We're probably going to have another called meeting in February because the services are still on hold. And so we don't want to end up at the end of this fiscal year with any of this money left on the table if there's another provider that can utilize them.
Commissioner Leiner, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, other than what Clayton had said. We're trying to move this money around. We've gotten money back from the state. We got money in from COVID. We got Fed's money, and we're trying to spend it as much as we can. We're not building our base that much, just trying to get the people that we do serve in there. Because a lot of the in-home aide people don't want us in their homes and everything else. So I think the board is doing a great job trying to get the money spent and allocated. We've got a lot of leeway in some of it, some of it we don't. It's pretty restricted how it's spent. So I think Mr. Gaston's doing a great job on the board.
All right. Any questions from the board? Here, none. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? This is for a budget amendment. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is our health director, and also, Mr. Gaston will make a presentation. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
If you're doing well.
Yes, sir, doing well this morning.
And also, I'd like to ask you, after we go through this, if you would, just to give us a short update of the status of our COVID situation.
Yes, sir, we will do. We'll do, happy to do so. Non-COVID item for this morning is the purchase of some companion software for our electronic health records for two reasons, really. Medicaid transformation, which is really like Medicaid managed care, and also fairly qualified health center reporting. None of the electronic health records that we've seen demoed or the one we have really do these types of things. And it's basically data analytics. What this companion software will do, or supposed to do, is pull data from our electronic health record and then put it into easily, easy-to-read reports for us and for the federally the federal UDS reporting. They are used by other health centers and now some other health departments as well. And the types of things that it will extract is patient-level data like A1Cs, did we, did our staff really ask the proper questions about maybe cancer screenings, do the correct population of patients based on their age? And then, in addition to that, things like hypertension. It basically gets down to that granular data, and we're able to use it to make sure we are doing the right things, as well as report it to Medicaid and report it to the federally qualified health centers through UDS reports. Right now, what we're doing is spot audits, and there's, we may audit 70 patient records to find one of the measurement criteria, like blood sugar, for instance. So this, we were able to get money through the North Carolina Community Health Center Association for the first three years, and $71,000 will cover the cost of this program for the first three years. And after that, we hope to get Medicaid incentive payments by hitting the numbers. And within, within a couple of years, we should be able, we should be there. So, does anybody has any questions?
Questions from the board? All right, here, none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is for a budget amendment of $71,074. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is the increase in hospice funding budget amendment. If you're asking.
Okay, so you'll see the budget amendment before you were asking for an additional 105,681, which would come from our Medicare revenues. And this will cover our part-time salaries, you see, for 12,481. That includes an increase in time for our part-time chaplain, and also, our part-time family nurse practitioner that does all of the face-to-face visits and does some visiting with the nurses on complex cases. Contract employees, we had a budget of 90,000 and have spent 72,385 of that 90. This will continue to, the increase of 86,000 will continue to cover the expense of a nurse and aide. I had a nurse out on FMLA for up to three months, and she's no longer with us at this point, but also now have a vacancy, so I'm trying to find a nurse contract to help us cover our caseload until we can get a nurse hired. Same thing with an aide. We have one of our long-term aides retire in December, and then the supplies, our medical supplies, for 7,200. So despite, and you'll see on the front of this, despite our census has been up and down with COVID, we're actually peaking again. I believe we may be around 40 to 42 right now. But we had an increase in number of patient on days, Medicare days. So there was 905 more days earlier in the summer during that first part of the fiscal year that resulted in 136,000 in revenue. So we've got it in our budget to cover this, but wanted to come before you all to ask permission.
All right, any questions from the board? Here, none. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Only thing I will say is, I've made this comment before, but, you know, we had a family member that we use Craven County Hospice. And I will tell you, the chaplain does an outstanding job, even up until this Christmas. She's still, a year later, she sent us a card and has been forthcoming in calling me, and I really appreciate it. We're very blessed.
What a lot don't realize is, and I think it's in here about the bereavement, so when our patients pass on, all of my other disciplines, their work ends, but Angel keeps going for a year after that.
She does.
Those contacts by phone and person and bereavement groups, those folks stay engaged with her through a year.
Very blessed to have Craven County Hospice.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership. Any others? George, do you have something?
No, I just wanted to hear Scott to come back.
Okay, all right. All right, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Clayton. All right. Mr. Harrison. First off, before you begin, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board. I mean, I know that you are putting in some very long, long hours, you and your staff, and we're very blessed to have your leadership during these times. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Thank you. Yeah, the, I think the staff at the Health Department has done a tremendous job. There were some, definitely some challenges, one being the CVMS system, which is the, it's called the COVID, it's the COVID Vaccine Management System. And unless you get your doses entered into that system in a timely fashion, you don't get credit for the doses you administer. And at the federal level, the number of doses you receive in the future is based on what you administer and get into that system. So we've had, I know other health departments have been doing a lot of vaccinations, but they've been doing it with paper. And now there's this, this large amount of work that they still have left to do to really get credit for the work they've done. Other people have been trying to, you know, schedule where you have 800 doses of vaccine and thousands of people wanting them through drive-throughs and people waiting hours in a vehicle. And sometimes at the end of the line, they find out that there are no more vaccine left because there was no appointment. So for these reasons, we decided to go away from paper, just do electronic, real-time, and also have appointments. And we started out this past week doing 240 a day, and so every, every 15 minutes, a group of 10 people would come in. No wait, really. The longest wait was the wait time that's required after you get the vaccine for monitoring. We've seen no adverse effects, and we've also seen that we can increase the amount of people or the amount of throughput. Giving the shot is quick. If you have three or four nurses, you can really do a lot of people in a short amount of time. The registration process and the pre-registration process. This morning at 8:30, our online registration started up. The state system has no registration, so we had to create our own. We formulated that after some other counties like Davidson that we had talked with. Really, that's the best way to do it, because that's, that's one of the challenges that we talked with Carolina East and CCHC, our partners in this. They are calling people, 65 and older, because like us, they can't have thousands of people calling in trying to get a relatively, you know, small amount of doses. If you look at the 65 and older population in Craven County, the census data, there's a little over 20,000 people in this age group, in this county. And up until now, we've only had about 2,000 doses come in between us and the hospital. Now, we requested more, and we did get more. As a matter of fact, we will be receiving here sometime this week, the Health Department will receive 975 second doses. We will slide 250 of those doses over to Carolina East. I believe they shared them with CCHC the first round. Carolina East will receive 975 second doses, and that's the Pfizer product. And then we will receive 200 second dose for Moderna. So this is the people coming back again. So that's 2,150 second doses. And then we got 500 Moderna for new first doses. And I was a bit surprised, but the hospital got 1,950 first doses of Pfizer. So this is, I mean, that's, that's 4,600 total doses coming to the county. That's, that's more than double what we've gotten thus far, and that's, that's a lot of doses to give. So today, we have some state contract, where we have people, not really contract, they're placed by the state, Department of Health and Human Services, regional staff coming over to help us. We also have some contract people that we've hired on. I'll be bringing forth some new funding. We got $46,000, a little over $46,000 for vaccine distribution from the state, and they tell me there's more to come. So the system's there for us to be successful. We have online registration to take that workload off of the staff. We also have a call center if you can't, for whatever reason, register online. We're going to ramp up from 240 a day to 300 a day. And pretty soon, we will be doing second doses and first doses on the same day. Logistically, it's tough. The Moderna product is a one-month wait. Pfizer product is a three-week wait. So you'll have these days where you're doing Pfizer and Moderna. You'll be doing first dose, you'll be doing second dose. But the second dose is a lot quicker because they've already been registered for their first dose. So it's basically when they walk in, oh, you're here. One click and go. So if we're doing an all-first-dose day here this week, probably do about 300 people. And it's a combination, and most of them are second-dosed, we could probably do 420 people in a day down there. And when I say down there, that's at the Riverfront Convention Center. It's a great site. Due to COVID restrictions, their business, you know, is down, so it was available. And we can set up, has great parking, a lot of space, a lot of, where you can really spread out the people and wait for the 15 minutes after the shot. And we shouldn't have any long lines or waits. And another thing I want to mention is, we make sure we have vaccine in hand before we schedule an appointment. We don't want to schedule appointments or have a waiting list for vaccine that we don't have. That's why we do this from week to week. Usually on Thursday evening, we find out what our allotments are going to be for the following week, and we receive them usually on Tuesday or Wednesday about lunchtime. So the way this is working out is, we get the doses in hand on a Tuesday or Wednesday, and then we schedule probably for the next week. And we're planning on being down there four days a week. And in addition to that, Carolina East and CCHC are helping. They're doing a tremendous work. So we're very fortunate here to have a hospital that works with us, to have a large medical group that works with us. And I feel very fortunate in talking to some of my peers that's not that way in other parts of the state. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Vice Chair.
First of all, a comment. I was at the Health Department last week, and it was really encouraging to see how, how efficient this process is going. People are moving in and out very quickly, and the people there that were working were all very positive, and it was, it was, it's doing, you're doing a good job of moving people through there, so that's good. Scott, the confusion, for lack of another word, is the state, I believe, announced that people 65 and over are now eligible. Well, that just threw a whole bunch of people into the mix who, first of all, we heard that it was, it was 1B, which was 75 and over. And as I read, there were 16,000 people in our county who are in that group. Then the state comes and says 65 and over. I'm sure that my peers here would agree that we've gotten some inquiries. Over the weekend, I got three personally, three different people. How do I get?
Phone's ringing right now about it.
How do I get my, how do I, how do I do this? I'm over 65. So my response is, you need to go on the website of the Health Department and register. When there's vaccine available, it will open up. And when I explained to them that there's 16,000 people over 75, they seemed to understand. But the idea of telling people 65 and over, you're now eligible, I think was a, was a, somewhat of a mistake, in my opinion. I don't know, I guess the state made that, that announcement. So anyway, my question to you, I guess, would be, could we get a, I know this is a moving target, but could we get a, a one-paragraph statement that we could, that we could email to people or text to them that says, hey, here's what you need to do. If you're over 65, you are eligible. However, and I'm just saying what I think it should say, however, we are limited by the number of doses that come to us. And what you just told us, only in a very brief paragraph, so that we could pass that on to people officially, rather than my, you know, when I, when they hang up from me, they may say, yeah, he doesn't know what he's talking about.
Yes, sir.
It'd be nice to have an official statement from, I guess, from you, just saying, if you're over 65, you are eligible. However, we can only administer based on the amount of vaccine that arrives in the county. And we're doing that by having you register for an appointment. And I think that might help us. I don't know if you guys have another suggestion beyond that, but I think it would be helpful. So that's, that's my suggestion, if we could.
Could I, could I expand on that just a little bit? Do we have any funding available that we might do? I know we've been doing a lot of PR anyway.
Yes, sir.
But to do maybe a TV ad on Channel 12, you know, and do exactly what he's saying. It comes directly from you and put out that message. I mean, do we have funds available for that yet, or?
Yes, sir, we should.
Should we tap into them?
We should have ample funds coming from the state in addition to the initial 46,000, but we could, we could probably line something up in short order. And it has been confusing. I think I'm on version three of our priority listing for these different groups. But right now, it's like Commissioner Booker said, our, our online registration is limited to 65 and over. That's who's at the front of the line now, 65 and older. And we have a call center as well, with four people manning the phones. So if you, for whatever reason, can't, can't do the online registration, you can also work through the call center. And, and that is very important, because these are the people who are doing the pre-registration, which makes it quicker once you actually show up in person for your shot. So we're doing that at the Health Department. That's our process. It's my understanding with Carolina East Physician Groups and CCHC, that their process is they're continuing to reach out and call. They're prioritizing their 65 and older population, and they're reaching out with phone calls. Because that's another question we've had from the public. Because, let's face it, most of your 65 and older either go to one of those two physician group practices in this area. So they are actively calling people, but if you, if you haven't received a call yet and you want to go online and register with us, that's fine, too. We're sharing the workload. They're going to get rid of every dose they have. We're going to get rid of every dose we have. And once all of the slots or the registration slots become filled, then we shut down registration until we have vaccine on hand, and then we open them back up. I know it's frustrating, but when you're week to week and you don't know what your allotment's going to be from week to week, I just don't see a better way to do that.
Just to add to that, Scott, one of the people who contacted me, I told them to, that they could contact, they, they use, CCHC is his doctor. He called his doctor, and his doctor said, we'll call you. So he now, he, he came back to me and said, thank you, I'm good, the doctor's going to call me when they have a dose. So that process is working as well, so.
And they're getting a lot more doses here this week, so shortly, I'm sure they'll be calling more people.
Other questions? Ms. B.
Go ahead, Ms. B.
I have a, a comment. I had my shot last week as well, as several members of my family. We're an old family and a young family, but it, everything went smoothly, excellent. And I, I also observed other folk in the building as they took their vaccinations and the people working with them. And to me, I was very impressed with professionalism of the people working and with the people that came in. They were scheduled perfectly so that you, when you, once you had your shot, there was a place for you to sit and there was somebody to check on you. And just, I thought it went beautifully.
Thank you, ma'am. Much appreciated.
Mr. Chair, I'll say, I can say that I had my shot done last week, and I met Scott there. And the shot I got was, I mean, I didn't feel anything, and I got a 15-minute wait to make sure I got any type of ration. And the people there are so kind, that everybody should be able to go there and receive their shots. And everybody was happy, friendly, talking. Scott, you, you, I commend you on your, what you do to work. You're doing a wonderful, wonderful job, and you and your staff. I would just thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Thank you. And to hear all of you talk about going through the process and getting your shot, hopefully that, if anybody has any hesitations and they hear you guys talk about getting it yourself, then they'll, you know, get in line as well. We have not wasted one dose thus far. We have had some no-shows, but what we do in that event is basically pull some of our staff in that have expressed interest, and we'll give them the shot so that we don't waste any doses. It's a small, small amount.
Commissioner Leiner?
Got a couple here, Scott. Scott, what's the telephone number to call online?
It's listed, it's listed on the web.
636-6693.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
6693.
6693, okay. Another thing I think everybody needs to understand, I mean, if you're going to put something out, there's, it's not the potential, it's happening out there, because Scott is not making appointments now, up past, up to the 25th.
Yes, sir.
But with CCHC and the hospital getting all of their doses, if these people have made appointments with us, it's out until the 25th. And CCHC or the hospital calls and offers them an early appointment, not knowing they got a health appointment call. So you've got the flexibility or the unfortunate, one of, one of the group is going to be left holding, and I'm glad to see you've got that going, because I've got a 93-year-old and a 90-year-old from CCHC and from the hospital haven't got a call yet. So they've gone online and called Scott and has gotten appointment. But now if they get a call and say, they're going to offer it Monday, I'm sure they're going to cancel Scott's. And I know they're not going to have the fortitude to call you and say, oh, I'm canceled because I'm going here. So that's, you know. Biggest thing I've, I've heard so far from you, we're not losing any dosages. We're not throwing dosages away.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
County manager?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Scott gave you a great overview. I, I called Scott at 6:30 on Friday, because I'd been on a two-hour conference call with all the county managers across the state. And I told Scott, number one, I was thankful for his staff and him, and how well they've planned this out. And I know a lot of people disagree with that. I mean, we certainly got the emails, right? They don't think we've done a good job. But there are counties in the state who have yet to give their, their first shot. We've been giving shots for some time. And it's a process. I think Commissioner Alana was getting there. I mean, it's, it's a partnership, it's doing what we can with what we've got. But the overall theme I heard in that call, and I reinforce this to Scott, was, is that there's not nearly enough supply to meet the demand of the folks who want it across the state. This is not Craven County uniquely. Patience is the key. There's lots of conversations going on from state government to federal government to try to, you know, figure out how we can get more shot to people like Scott to get it out. There's a lot of different ways that counties are vaccinating people. Quite frankly, I, I agree with him, we're blessed here to have the convention center. It is perfect for this setup. We heard a lot about drive-through clinics on the, on the call on Friday, and from what I could tell, those are, are great, that people don't have to get out of their car, but they're bad from a logistical standpoint, trying to get everybody maneuvered through the site. So I don't think there's one, one size fits all. I, I could tell you the folks in Nans taking most of the calls over the last couple of weeks. They're frustrated, and rightfully so. I think everybody's frustrated with COVID at this point. I think, though, if we can just see the light a little bit, Scott, and know that if we can get a couple of weeks under us, get more product in here, we can run through this pretty quick with our setup. I mean, that, that's my take. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Only question, and I agree with Vice Chair, this weekend, I mean, it's, my phone is run. There's a lot of interest, I'm surprised. And folks that had first said, I'm not going to take it, now say, I want the shot, you know? And we've been given that number, 636-6693. I give it out, so I know it by heart. One of the questions, though, I have received is, you know, you do have an elderly population of folks, and, and they've been asking, you know, do I need to carry my wheelchair? Do they have wheelchairs there? Is there somebody to help me? Could you give us a little insight?
Good, good question, especially with that key population. Yes, sir, we have wheelchairs available. We also have a tent set up in front of the convention center, where if you can't get out of your car, we'll come to you.
That's great. That's good information.
And I think that with the help of CCHC, Carolina East, and us going full out, trying to get these vaccines, and, and both of them are also real-time entering it into the system. They, they have people who enter the data into the CVMS system, so we're going to put our best foot forward, and I think that's going to pay dividends as far as us getting more vaccine in.
All right, any other, Commissioner Alana?
Scott, how, do you have a, are you keeping track, or are you getting anybody reporting you? How are we doing with the assisted living homes, with CC, with CVS and Walgreens giving those shots out? Do you know where we're standing at that point?
I couldn't tell you right now in, in Craven County. I know that CVMS and Walgreens have been giving some out. I think that that rollout is also, from what I've heard, a little slower than what was anticipated. But I do know that fortunately, the rest homes in our area all signed on for that program. So, you know, if we can get them covered and the 65 and older population immunized, you should really see a, a big decline in the COVID-related deaths.
Commissioner Alana, I, I think Scott's right. They talked a little bit about that on Friday. I think it's been, they've been able to get it out, but they're not getting the supply they need, so they're taking it, vulnerable group in one, vulnerable group in the next, and going back and, and taking it kind of in a tiered approach statewide. I think, Scott, I don't know if you said this earlier, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but I think it was last week, the total dose units that North Carolina got was 120,000, which is, if you look at the grand scheme of the total people who are allowed to be vaccinated in North Carolina, it's probably over 7 million, Scott. I don't know, there's a lot of children here, too, in North Carolina, but, I mean, that's not enough to make a appreciable dent.
No, no. You'd, you'd somewhere around 1% of your pop state population with that.
Vice Chair.
Now, my last question is, how are we doing as far as hospitalizations? Is our hospital, number of people in the hospital with COVID, is it, is it continuing to go up? Is it down? Is it stable? Where are we at?
Yes, sir. Good question. I, I would say that I, I haven't talked with Dr. May this morning, you know, yet. He usually gives me the update, him and some other people at the hospital. At the end of last week, they were in the 40s range, and that's high, that's a lot of people in their COVID unit. So hospitalizations were high. Also, transmission is high. North Carolina was ranked 14th. We did get as high as number seven in the nation for rate of transmission. So it, it's everywhere. Every county in the state on that Harvard-based transmission, seven-day average, was red. So I think statewide average, Craven County may be a few, a few percentage points lower than the statewide average, but it, it's all high.
Scott, I, I hate to put you on the spot, but while I'm sitting here, I told you my phone's ringing.
Yes, sir.
And I just got a text from somebody, says, I've just called the number that you gave me, and I get a recording that says, all slots have been filled, no answer or messaging. That's to the Health Department this morning. Is that-
Well, I, I pulled up, we opened up the online registration site at 8:30 this morning, so I don't know how many slots were available, right off the top of my head, but they filled up quick, if, if that is the case. I, I don't know.
There may be a possibility they got filled up with the online stuff.
Possibly, but that, that would be very quick at this point, because they just opened up at 8:30.
If you don't mind, I hate to aggravate you, but if you could send something back, you know, maybe to, to county manager and just give us an update.
Yes, sir. I do know that we added one day's worth of appointments, and it filled up within a matter of hours last week.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Now, thank you so much for the update this morning, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Solid Waste, Mr. Stephen Astor, Solid Waste Director, and Mr. Hodges, I think, is also going to see us. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me, Board. I have two items here today. The first one, I'll just jump right in here, is the extension of the Solid Waste Franchise Agreement. And reading from the sheet here, Craven County signed a five-year solid waste franchise agreement on March 13th, 2017. This agreement is set to expire on June 30th, 2022. Craven County Solid Waste Department has worked in conjunction with the Craven County Administrative Team to negotiate a two-year extension. And you can see, you can follow that on Attachment 4A with Waste Industries. They are doing business as GFL. If approved, this proposed negotiated, negotiated extension will expire on June 30th, 2024. The proposed extension continues the trash sticker program, as well as a collection of trash stickers at convenience centers. Under this extension, county residents will still be able to put out bags of trash curbside while utilizing the trash stickers, and will also be able to take their trash to their convenience sites while utilizing the trash stickers. And I did put a note at the bottom, this proposed extension does not contemplate the price of trash stickers. And we are asking the Board today to consider approval for the franchise agreement extension.
All right, are there any questions from the Board?
A question. The first part, franchise of the agreement, I can understand that part, but didn't have, last time, I voted against raising, raising the trash stickers? So I can vote on the first part, but not the second part.
It's, it's one part. I just threw that in, sorry if I confused you on that. It's one part, this is just a continuation of the program. It has nothing to do with the price of the trash stickers.
But, but you did raise, you're going to raise, not going to-
We haven't determined that yet, no, sir.
He's saying that, that this, by you approving this item, it has, you're not changing the price of the trash sticker, but the price of the trash sticker could change as you approach budget time and you look at the CPI and all those things. So this is to extend the contract with GFL to continue to pick the trash up. You deal with trash stickers at budget time.
Okay.
Just didn't want you to think you were setting the trash sticker rate by doing this.
Correct.
Any other questions? Here or none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second. Any additional discussion? Here or none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed, all right. Number B.
Thank you, Board. Our second item today is an extension of the convenience site hauling agreement. Craven County signed the five-year convenience center hauling agreement in April of 2016. This agreement is set to expire in June 30th, 2021. This, the Craven County Solid Waste Department has worked in conjunction with the Craven County Administrative Team to negotiate the three-year extension in Attachment 4B. And that is, again, with Waste Industries doing business as GFL. If approved, this proposed negotiated extension will expire on June 30th, 2024. We are asking the Board to consider the approval of the convenience site, convenience center hauling agreement extension.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair.
Stephen, can you just, one quick question. Can you explain what the 4.12 is at the bottom about reimbursing third-party costs?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, I could handle that one. Jack or Gene, do you want to? Okay. Recycling is getting really expensive to dispose of, so under this agreement, there was a negotiated extension, if you will, to reimburse GFL with recyclable processing material. Recycling, so all of our recycling in Craven County is, is handled through Sunoco in Jacksonville. They're starting to charge GFL with a recycling processing fee. So every time that we take our, and we're dealing with convenience center hauling here, so we have recyclable dumpsters on our convenience centers, so every time they are taking our convenience center recyclable to Sunoco, they are getting charged an additional fee. And up until this extension, GFL has had to assume those costs.
So Commissioner Booker, and I think Stephen handled that really well, but the reason Sunoco is charging a fee back to GFL is at times the product we send is either inferior, meaning it's the type of material that they have to pay somebody to take, which is the majority of our material, or the material's contaminated. And to give an example, I, I shared this with a couple commissioners the other day, there was a load that came out of one of our convenience sites that was a recyclable container, that someone had thrown a bag of adult diapers in. So that, that load, as it's carried to Sunoco and dumped on the floor, they have to scrape it back up, put it in the can, take it to the landfill, because it's contaminated at that point. So we've got some challenges, and Stephen's working with his folks, and we're working with our contractors to make sure we don't, number one, have contaminated loads, but again, we can't control that what's in our cans, the least profitable items.
Yeah, thank you.
That's, that's why this fee is there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here or none? We have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed.
Chair, if I may, you know, I, I think we need to thank the staff and the leadership. By getting these extension, it, it's taken us out of a bind, coming, you know, real soon before this board breaks up one way or the other, that we need to thank them for this, because there's only one dealer out there that's taking this stuff. Only one dealer's really the, ready to pick up, so getting an extension and keeping it the way it is for three more years is, is commendable, so I thank you.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Facilities Request for Exemption for Engineering Services, Assistant County Manager, Mr. Gene Hodges. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Only got one wing, so I'm going to try to wing it with this. So at the work session, we brought forward a budget amendment for a study of the floor slab issues and the floor slab repairs at the New Bern Craven Library. We discovered that they were selling in that concrete foundation late 2018. Under advice from the county attorney, we are requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve the attached resolution of exemption for this project. This exemption will allow the Facilities Department to contract with Engineered Foundation Solutions and Accident Recovery Analysis to conduct a laser scan and forego the formal request for qualification processes. So once we had that meeting, we conferred with the county attorney, and it's the Mini Brooks exemption that, because the number, and you see the estimates that we've got, is less than $50,000, we can request an exemption to forego the, for, the full RFQ process for this project.
All right, any questions?
Make a motion.
Here or none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here or none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have appointments. You see those that are pending? We're still working on them, and I ask all the commissioners to join with us and continue to. Under B, we have current today for reappointment. All these individuals seek reappointment. They have to do with our Fire Tax Commissioners and Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. The first is Mr. Shane Turney from Township 8, West New Bern. He's serving since 2015. He is eligible for reappointment. In Commissioner Mitchell's absence today, I think we both share this, and Commissioner Smith also, so I would ask that this, Mr. Turney be reappointed. Hear no objection. Next would be Mr. Timothy Mason from Township 2, Tri-Community Commissioner Mark.
Yeah, I would reappoint.
All right. Hear no objection? He'll be reappointed. Next, under Emergency Medical Advisory Council, Mr. Keith Morris.
I would recommend that.
All right. Objection? Hear none? He's reappointed. And then next is Mr. Michael Paul. I'm not sure where he comes from. Any commissioners recognize?
No. Michael Paul.
I think he's from one of the private nonprofit providers, sir. Not nonprofit, the private providers.
All right. All right, well then, if that's the case, I would ask that he be reappointed, if you hear no objection. All right, then you see the upcoming terms that are expiring in February. Please take note of them, and we have a long list there. All right, County Attorneys Report, Mr. Eric Grady.
Mr. Chairman, no report this morning.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. I just have a couple updates. It was nice getting back to some normalcy last week. I attended two committees, and I'm a ex officio member on. One was the ACT Board. They met on Thursday with a conference call. Lot going on, obviously changing election, new folks in DC, new folks in Raleigh, means we've got to work to put the message back out about the importance of Cherry Point and FRC East. I think they're right on. They got a lot of meetings set up in the future. I'll defer to Commissioner Alana, there was some announcement of some really good news for the base, but I'm going to, I think he'll probably say it better than I would. I also attended the New Bern MPO meeting last Thursday. Again, virtually, they had a great meeting, they've approved some of their long-term plans. Obviously, they're still trying to position the plans that are coming out of the urbanized area. If DOT was to get fully funded again, whether it's through general appropriations, the economy turns, they get more gas tax, or there's things, Gene, like transportation bonds and things out there that they might use for funding. A lot of interesting projects, Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Smith, particularly here in the, in the city of New Bern, lots of changes. I would recommend you take a look at that. Gene, I believe it was a 2045 Vision Plan, really interesting plan. I'll get you a copy, I think you'd like to, like to take a look at that. Also last week, I believe also on Thursday, I attended a project kickoff with Mr. Hodges and staff. We are kicking off our SCADA project, which you remember back in, I believe it was in November, you approved that project to move forward. This will be a project which connects all our water infrastructure with fiber, also puts in a new control system that we lost during Hurricane Florence, it's more modern, will allow us better control of our assets out in the field. I thought the meeting went great. Timeline's very aggressive, funding looks good. Of course, we won't know what it really costs until we bid it this summer, but I feel really good about it, Gene, and it also gives us opportunity to expand the internet footprint good about it, Gene, and it also gives us opportunity to expand the internet footprint as we move out in the county, once we take our fiber there. And Commissioner McCabe, just to follow up, I also had a call on Friday with a group about Township 5 broadband internet. You'd asked me at the last meeting how that was going. I think there's, quite frankly, more progress on it right now than we've seen the entire time. So, I was on with the Carter Craven EMC, along with a company out of Duplin County, really moving forward to put a grant application in on the next cycle. The good news would be is this company could use some of the assets from the Electric Cooperative to get it further down, not necessarily talking about the fixed base wireless, which is using elevation to shoot a signal to the home, but actually fiber to the home, which means you'd be hardwired in, just like you would here in the city of New Bern. So, that project, again, is going to require funding, it's going to require partnership. You know, obviously, by saying they're putting an application in, that doesn't mean anything other than it's moving down the line, and people are trying to get it funded.
What about Southern Link? Are they involved in this?
Southern Link is not involved. This would be in Spectrum's territory, and they have had some conversations, but it's gone really quiet with them at this point.
So, actually, we don't really need Southern, you know, to...
You would not need Spectrum, obviously, be the easiest thing, because they're already down Adams Creek Road to the Plantation Harbor Golf Course. So, it's easy for them, they just got to extend it, but they've got to have a willingness to do that. We haven't seen that yet, they have not said no, and they haven't said yes yet. They just remain relatively quiet on that.
Thank you.
And then, to follow up, on the Southern Link issue, we heard from, I believe Commissioner Booker and others mentioned that at our last meeting. I've had conversation with the Regional Vice President up in West Virginia, Bob Lilly. Bob has agreed to have a meeting virtually with a couple commissioners and myself to begin the process of talking about how they can address some of the local concerns. I think we've authored the letter, it's been signed by the chair, to go to the Attorney General, just like the city of New Bern, Washington, and Tarboro did. I think, quite frankly, we may make more progress with Bob in learning about organizational changes, as he described, that may improve the efficiency, which has been troubling for some time. I can't tell you exactly what it is until we meet with him, but obviously, there's something there.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
If we could have the letter also go to both of our representative, Representative Tyson and Senator Sanderson. I talked to them at the swearing-in. They're getting hit up as well, and they're ready to move forward up at the House level, even talking about what we had about 12 years ago, where we had a little bit of control.
Yep, that's right. Well, that's a good thing. Dan, could you arrange for that to go to them as well? Thanks. Lastly, and I don't want to contradict or say anything negative or positive about what Scott said, because he's the expert, but what I would tell you, and I'm really proud of Team Craven, as you guys know, we don't take things as an individual department issue. It's very well, most counties, it's just a health department issue. But I'm proud of Team Craven, I'm proud of our maintenance staff, convention staff, Sheriff's Office staff, environmental health, administration, finance, HR, everyone who's making sure that vaccine site that opens up down at the convention center today is a success. We don't believe in departmental boundaries in Craven County. Just because you're in the health department doesn't mean you're in a silo and you don't work with someone in IT or in facilities. And I can tell you, it's only shown, in my mind, I see this thing, but then I see things like Hurricane Florence, the pandemic, a vaccine site, where I see that it really does work that way. And it makes me awfully happy as a county manager, because that's what we want. I can think of a scenario, Gene and I talk about all the time, when we first started, gosh, a decade ago, it was a conversation with an employee. We said, hey, have you called this other department to see if they have some data that you might be able to use? And their response back was, what department? And from that moment on, I knew that that's not the way that this thing's supposed to work, because we're all in it for the same goal. We're all here for the citizens. So, I want to thank Scott, I want to thank Tarsha, I want to thank Steve Creel and our maintenance staff and the sheriff. They've just done a fantastic job working together, it's going. There's one way to verify, you get a lot of phone calls, Commissioner Booker, and I appreciate that, and we got them too. I would recommend that each of you stop by over the next week or two, by the convention center, and put your eyes on the operation. So, when those folks call, you have a, you got it right here when they call, you know exactly what to tell them the process would be like. I just checked, Mr. Chairman, while I was sitting there, there are still slots available. There was when I walked up here for folks to call in. On the phone number side, I believe they just hadn't got the message changed for the call center just yet, so there are slots online if you're there. Mr. Chair, that's all I have, unless there's questions for me.
Questions from the board? All right. Not...
I would just echo his comments about everybody working together, and it is comforting to see, because there's a lot of people putting in a lot of hours right now and a lot of stress, particularly trying to move these people through and then still do their regular job, which, whatever that is. So, I agree, I think we've got to...
If one component piece fails, we all fail in county government. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. County Manager. Just a clarification, are they not going to open up the phone line, or?
They are, sir. It's just that the message from the weekend hadn't got lifted just yet.
Okay.
But there are slots available.
Okay, thank you. All right, beginning today, Commissioner Mark?
Yeah, you know, I agree with, the health department is doing a great job, but, you know, also the hospital is doing a great job. Just to give you an instance, the employees there, we had a woman who had a, they were taken home, two of the employees took this woman home, and they noticed that she was upset because she didn't have a Christmas tree up, and her family couldn't come to visit her. So, one night, they went over there and put a Christmas tree up for her. In addition to that, while they were there, they noticed that the woman needed a commode near the bed, and so that it was, be delivered, but it wasn't delivered, so they went and got the commode and gave it to the woman. I mean, this is the kind of staff that we've got at that hospital, they really extend themselves. It's unbelievable. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Commissioner Liner?
Yes, sir, I have a number of things to bring up. First of all, I would like to thank yourself and this board for assigning me to the Legislative Goals Conference last week. Best eight hours of my life. Best eight hours of...
I would.
Sitting there on that. It was productive, it got off to a slow start, but it came out to be productive. We got about, we had 76 counties joined on the Zoom for both days, which is pretty good, considering where a lot of these, where, you know, problems we have with the internet and everything else. I will be coming back to each and every one of you this week. We've got 32 goals that they've agreed to, to put forward, but they're going to send them out to the counties, and I'm going to need you all to take a look at them and reference your priorities, the top 10 anyway, in order, 1 through 10. The rest will just go by the wayside down there, but put in order the top, what you feel are your top 10 priorities, the goals that were set by your board on this. Other than that, it was good and interesting, believe me. What Jack was referring to as far as ACT goes, some good news for Cherry Point. I think most of us has gone through the back gate of Cherry Point on the flyover. Well, you know, once it comes over the flyover to the back gate, then you only got that, you got that blockage there. MCI East has come up with $26 million to extend that back gate road and put a new bridge across Slocum Creek, to where they will extend that project all the way through to Roosevelt, which has been on the list for, as far as, best of mine, actually, before I retired from down there, which is a great improvement. It opens up Cherry Point for other possibilities for that back area, so that's real good news on that. The second thing, and this has all been generated by, truthfully, ACT and the legislative people in DC, because this and Tom Tillis, because this was on the unfunded, and it was put on the funded list, but when the president didn't sign the budget, it got kicked out completely. So, with the storm money and everything that MCI East had, they were able to come up with the bids that came in lower than what was expected for all their damages they received. They've got money capable, and it's already been put out there, bids are going forward to start that project. The second one is even better news, and this has been generated again by ACT pushing the legislators and Tom Tillis's office to getting this through. If any of you have been aboard Cherry Point, you know that their gymnasium or their exercise facility, or whatever you may want to call it, is an old blimp hangar. Been down there since World War II. It's probably the only blimp hangar, I think, left on the East Coast down there. That has been approved. Mickey East has found money, again, to the tune of about $20 million, to replace and bring that up. And that's a great improvement for that base down there, because I've been in this area for 36 years. It was the number-one priority back then, it's still been the number-one priority back then, but the Marine Corps instruction money, as far as mission essential, it wasn't a priority. It didn't ever, never made a priority. Tom Tillis brought it up, brought it forward and everything else, so Mickey East has come up with that money. So, about, somewhere between 40 and 50 million dollars, Mickey East has come forward to get those two projects going for Cherry Point, and it was on the pushing and the legislation people with ACT, getting this going through it, and I think the old CO, Todd Ferry, who is now the Chief of Staff for MCI East, had a lot to do with it, getting this brought forward, so we can be thanked for that. But other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Liner. Commissioner Smith?
I don't believe I have anything.
All right, that's fine. Thank you. Commissioner McCabe?
No, Chair, I don't have anything at this present moment.
All right, Vice Chair Booker?
I have nothing.
Mr. Chairman, could I just mention something?
Yes, sir.
Because it was asked by Denny. There were a high of 59 that were in the hospital, or Colbert, and today, it's 25.
It's good.
It's going down.
Going down a lot, it's good.
If the board will allow it, my comments, the sheriff is still here. Sheriff, will you come in? Good morning, sir. Just want to give the sheriff the opportunity, he's present at our meeting today, just give him the opportunity to make a few comments, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I just wanted to bring you up to date on kind of the, with inauguration and stuff going on in DC this week, and a lot of the rhetoric that's been going on. I want you to feel comfortable in knowing that your county is safe. I've had multiple conversations with our chief in Havelock, our leadership at New Bern Police Department, as well as the municipalities throughout the county. We're in close contact also with our federal counterparts, as well as the State Bureau of Investigation, who runs the Fusion Center, who is kind of the nucleus of all intel that comes in in regards to what's going on in North Carolina. Right before walking in here, we have no credible threats at all of any rhetoric that's going to be going on in Craven County. Our special response team is going to be on standby in the event any of this nonsense starts, whereas I do support peaceful assembly. We will not stand for any destruction or rhetoric to go on anywhere in the county. And I just wanted to let you know that, that we are prepared if anything goes down. Our people are well-trained, thanks to y'all. We have the equipment we need, where we can respond to just about any type of civil disturbance now, and I cannot tell you how comforting that is to know that my people, as they go into these potential volatile situations, are adequately protected with communications and safety gear. So, we're ready for anything they might throw at us, but as it stands right now, there are no credible threats whatsoever in Craven County.
All right, any questions for the sheriff this morning?
You're doing a good job, Sheriff.
Sheriff, I did, you and myself, talked about a flyer that went out in the Spring Garden community over the weekend, and I have given all the commissioners a copy of it. The sheriff and myself have talked about it. We are going to reach out to the leadership there at the shooting range and try to talk to them about it, and this has been an ongoing conversation with staff for a number of years of the concerns there, and, you know, we've had the county attorney involved in kind of seeing what we can and can't do. We don't have zoning, but it is something becoming a, more of a conversation for this community, and it's not just being, the shooting range is not being just utilized by law enforcement, it's utilized by many.
Yes, sir.
I think till last night, as we talked, you went over several groups.
Yeah, there are a number of civilian groups as well, you know, where I think, having gone out there for many, many years, and my office utilizes that range, you know, I cannot speak for the safety that everybody practices while they're out there. Of course, it's encouraged. I know at my office, we have very strict guidelines when we're out there that we follow. But there are a lot of folks that use it. I think everybody means well, but I think first and foremost, the safety of our citizens that live in that area is something that we need to make sure is being adhered to, and if they have concerns, I think they need to be addressed properly. You know, I think working closely with the folks out there, the leadership out there, I'm sure we can come to some type of resolve that works out in everybody's best interest. But it has been, it has been going on for a while. We've gotten calls off and on, not a high number of calls, but still, you know, anytime we get one, it's concerning.
Commissioner Smith, I saw your hand.
Yes, my question, my question and concern is, is it a matter of safety or annoyance? Are the citizens annoyed by the noise, or are they actually not safe by what's happening there?
Great question. So, the calls that we have got, which have been somewhat limited, have been a little bit of both.
Okay.
As far as the noise and what they feel like might be a safety issue in regards to rounds, obviously, whenever you fire a round, it goes up, it's going to come down somewhere. But I think there are a lot of safety measures out there. It's not to say that it can't be done better. It's really the only, for the most part, the only range that we have in the county that we can utilize, and it's not a county range, it's just something we're members of, because for me to send all of my sworn members out of the county to train, there's a cost there as well, but it's a huge, huge inconvenience, so. I can only speak to, like, when we're out there, the safety measures that we take. They have range rules, but we have some that are above and beyond that, and none of my folks go out there unless they're accompanied by certified firearms instructors.
Would you have one of y'all, gentlemen, want to go first?
Jack, is this the same one we had problems with about five years ago on the 50-cal? Same range?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vice Chair?
As a member of that organization, safety is something that is preached, if you will, at every meeting. Before a new member comes in, they have to go through a safety training program. I don't think the public realizes how many organizations use that range. Every officer at the prison regularly comes out and practices that range, federal, state, people of many, many organizations that protect us are using it for their training. So, I'm not making light of this, if there's a problem, obviously, there were, a number of years ago, this, when I first joined, I became aware of neighbors that were complaining about safety and noise, and the safety part, I'm not sure I totally get, but the noise, I understand if you live close by. How many years has that range been there?
Oh, it's...
Since 1968.
Yeah.
68.
A lot of...
That would be, that would be 53 years.
Over 50 years it's been there, so it's not something that just popped up.
And maybe I didn't realize you were a member of it, maybe you can just help relay the message for us, you know, and we want to work in conjunction with them, but we are getting on.
But I think, Danny, bringing your point on, I think what's, what got me interested in it when it started, we had an individual, or maybe a number of individuals, and I don't understand this, why they would take a 50-cal out there and shoot. A 50-cal, probably, there's probably not a range in this area that can support a 50-cal shot, and we've had that. Matter of fact, we went out and looked at a couple barns where it ricocheted and went through.
Yeah.
Out there, so, and that's what, you know, I thought we had that all set up, but I'm going to talk to the sheriff. We got two other ranges in this county that we may want to, you know, you may want to take a look at.
All right, anything else for the sheriff? Sheriff, thank you. Appreciate you being here at this meeting today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank y'all for all you do and your support.
Appreciate your leadership. The only other thing that I would offer under my comments is you allowed Commissioner Liner and myself to serve on the Craven Pamlico Regional Library Board of Trustees. This past week, under Commissioner Liner's leadership as chairman of the Personnel Committee, the board voted to hire a new regional director full-time, and that individual is Mrs. Catherine Clowers. She is our interim director. We went through a thorough... a thorough process, and she received the highest number of votes after that process. And so, she will begin her duties February the 8th as full-time for the region, and so we look forward to that. All right. Anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners today? Hear none? Do I have a motion? Do we adjourn?
So moved.
Moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.